Okay, we'll turn this up. All right. Everybody make sure their mics on since mine's not. There we go. All right, good evening, everybody. Welcome to our Tuesday, August 17th, 2021 City Council Workshop. We're coming to you live from City Hall, at least most of us. We have a few council members joining us remotely. But we are all in attendance tonight. So great to have everybody back, good to see the citizens engaging. So we are going to continue still with our hybrid meetings with as much council as possible in the chambers with the public attending remotely as well as some staff. So tonight on our agenda, we've got a review of the council priorities. I'll just do a quick roll call just so we can verify who one is here. Mayor President Tim Kennedy.
Present.
Councilmember Langford.
Present.
Councilmember Severs.
Present.
Councilmember Dunn.
Happy to be in person.
Councilmember Foleer? Councilmember Foleer? Can't hear you.
He's there.
I see you. All right, well, we'll count you here while you work on the mic. Councilmember Garcia.
Present.
And Councilmember Kurt.
Present.
All right, okay, welcome, everybody. So I guess we can kind of just jump right into it. Todd or Kyle, I don't know who's doing the share of the screen. We do have updated council priorities. So those council members who aren't in chambers, we just sent out just a little bit ago, an updated list on the staff. I know the direction coming out of the last workshop was for the staff to take a look at the priorities to that meeting and put some information behind it. Katie, I didn't know if you want to start out with the staff process and then we can kind of go through this.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, so we met a couple of times and what we wanted to do was really focus in on what we consider priorities. And there's kind of a reoccurring theme that I wanted to share with the council. And that is taking care of what we have as far as facilities and roads and all those things, our library, our police department, and then taking care of the projects that are in the queue and really focusing in on that. If we were going to embark on a new project per se, probably keep it at a planning level. And there's a couple of reasons for that, which has to do with design efforts, buying supplies, and hiring contractors. This is a very challenging time to move in that direction. So what we did then, after we identified those priorities, we identified the staff that we need in order to deliver those services to our community. And between Washington state law of what is required for employees these days and shifting from detail workers to full-time workers, that's what we came away with. So a lot of these positions are, some of those positions are cost recoveries, some of them are actually reducing seasonal employees and bringing in full-time employees. But with that, Mayor, the list kind of captures everything. And there are some big numbers there, but we tried to be, as I will say, diligent and not over padding it, but being realistic about the resources that we need.
Okay. All right, so I guess we can kind of start from the top. We've got the four categories that you guys talked about at the last workshop, the first one being safe, active, and engaged community. Obviously, these follow the strategic plan. First section here is COVID-19 migration mitigation, sorry, wrong subject. So the mitigation, we really have the TBD as to what's going to be spent for 2022, as we've talked about before. We have up till the end of 2024, I didn't say 14, 2024 to allocate until the end of 2026 to spend it. So that's going to be an ongoing number. So as you see this, you will notice that the items that have an asterisk next to them might be eligible for ARP funds. We want to make sure we designated that. So, you know, there's obviously a lot more ongoing work to do on the COVID-19 mitigation. Really, there's no number to put to that unless we would put the full $3 million, which is not what, I don't expect us to be spending all of that in 2022. Anybody have any comments, concerns, questions about that first one? Anything you would want to add with regards to a note?
I just would challenge, is there any objective to actually commit expense during the 2022 calendar year for this objective?
That's for council discussion.
Discussion?
Yep. I'm going to try to make sure I keep my eye on those who are on the note, so you flag me down if I don't see you guys.
I guess we'll have a hard time hearing this. Isn't that?
Yep, double check, make sure your mics are on and close to you.
Checkpoint on audio. Checkpoint on audio. So my observation was, is there any objective from the event to actual spend during the 2022 calendar year? And, you know, as a seated question, I don't expect an amount, or I guess I'd say I'm looking for more.
Go grab my Sony speaker, my boom, please.
Repeat the question.
Sounds like they're still having some hard time hearing.
Okay, so checkpoint on audio, and I'm going to look for Annie to respond.
I can hear you fine.
Sound okay?
Yeah.
Okay, cool. So yeah, I mean, the question is, is there a commit from the council on any actual spending in the 2022 calendar year? And when I say that, I don't necessarily look for an amount, I want to spend as much, as much as a gesture in what is perceived as priority.
Well, and, well, I'm not going to jump in, I'll let you guys have a discussion and I'll jump in when you guys are done. Is there anybody else who wants to follow up?
I think that one of the most important things to determine is what can the money be spent on? And I haven't seen any clear definitions leading us to that.
Yeah, and I know we do have a discussion on the next council meeting, but Kyle, since we're on that, I know that the guidance keeps changing, we keep getting more and more clarification. Can you just let us know where we are at this point?
Still largely in a development phase for rules. I'm not 100% sure when they're going to finalize that, but we'll keep an eye on it. And one thing that I have told Katie and Mayor is, we have to look at this more as a marathon versus a race when we're spending these dollars, because those rules are going to change throughout this process.
And I think through this process, as you can see, there's a couple of asterisks on the list already of things that we think will be eligible. So I think that COVID number will kind of develop partly as we go through the priorities process.
I think it's a compliment on the question for suggestion discussion. I believe that there are a collection of nonprofits in our community which have a real footprint in contributing to recovery.
Yep.
I believe that recognizing those nonprofits and some of them should be an objective for the council.
Yep, agree. And that's what's on our agenda for the seventh, correct, Katie?
Correct, yeah. So the 6:00 PM workshop includes a dedicated workshop on Rescue Plan Act priorities for the council. This is kind of a blend of what would be eligible and what wouldn't be eligible, but we do have a workshop on the seventh.
Great.
Okay.
And just kind of on a side note, we should have, Kyle, help me out, the last stage of submit your applications, so to speak, for the nonprofits this round is, I think it's the end of August.
Yeah, I think it's the 30th.
The 30th, so we will have back from the nonprofits dollars that they're missing.
Yeah, just to jump in, deadline is 5:00 PM on August 27th, that is a Friday.
Yeah, that'll give us some time in the staff time to go through and put together some information for the package that'll go out.
Question?
Yes, so Mayor Tim.
Thank you, Mayor.
Katie, can you comment on the applications that we've received so far? Is it a good turnout? Do you get any results with that?
Three.
We do have a lot of interest and we are getting a lot of questions.
Good.
And so I think that the nonprofits that I hear are really, very appreciative of the council reaching out to them, going out the forms, keeping the application process relevant, but also easy. We're basically looking at what funds did they, what funds did they not collect during the COVID era that ended June 30th when the governor opened the state back up?
Good, thank you.
Councilmember Langford.
Yes, particularly to Kyle. Kyle, what policies are we putting into place for the distribution of funds to whomever, since we're talking about the nonprofits? How are we ensuring that they're getting the money for the intended purpose? That they haven't applied through another agency for similar or the same funds? Or are they going to actually spend the dollars that we give them on what they said they were willing to spend it on? And how do we track that for our own accountability and auditing purposes?
So we can certainly put mechanisms in place to track. Getting this money out the door to the nonprofits is explicitly permitted in that first round of rules that the US Treasury put out. So this is kind of the low hanging fruit. If we want to get this money out the door as fast as we can, we did have a question in the application that specifically spoke to, have you applied for other COVID-19 mitigation grants and what that dollar amount is for council to consider as well? But we will develop our own list of policies in line with US Treasury on expenditures once council allocates those.
Thank you.
And you can?
Councilmember Langford, I was going to add too, they have to have a 501(c)(3) status and they get audited on an annual basis by the state to keep that status. It must be spent on nonprofit activities. So this, I'm sure, will be reported to the state, the $100 that they receive from us or other.
Right, and they could, they'll be able to cross-reference our distributions to their incoming expenditures as well.
Okay. All right, anybody else have any comments on 1A, Mayor Tim?
If I can reflect a little further, what I was talking about is that, and I think you had the same conversation, you met with Spokane Valley Chamber of Commerce, because I was there the day before. And what came up is that how do they, how do they deal with this, this question that Councilmember Langford is bringing up? And they really had a challenge with this, of saying, okay, to be able to prove, are they worthy of this? And how do you get into that? How deep do you get into this? And do you have the staff to be able to do that? So that's going to be an ongoing challenge for us, this is determined, if we go that far, that would do, do we just give it because they ask? Or is it, do they really have a need? Is an organization asking for it because they didn't get to do something in 2020? But are they asking where they would raise money in one area, and other 501(c)(3)'s went ahead and did the exact same thing? They were successful in raising money. So the challenge can be, as they were pointing out, let's say you have A here who went and put on events in 2020, put the effort forward, collected the funds. Now you have B over here that would have done the same thing, but they chose not to do that. So these individuals are asking for more money than these individuals are. Does that make these people more worthy than this person? Or what's more worthy, the people who put out the effort? So it's a dichotomy of figuring out the direction.
Yeah, and it can be even more complicated than that, did the other one not put it on because they didn't have the people to put it on?
That's right. Anything's going to be.
I expect all those questions to come up during the next meeting if we're going through the applications.
One thing, Mayor.
Yes.
That I would suggest is that we get in touch with them and review or preview or let them include us in on what kind of policies they develop and why. And maybe it can keep us from having to reinvent a wheel for ourselves.
Absolutely, yeah.
So anyway, it may be helpful.
And I've got another meeting with them tomorrow, Valley Chamber tomorrow morning. All right, moving on to 1B, Communication and Engagement Manager, sort of a title we're playing with. We discussed bringing somebody on in 2022 to handle engagement with the community, social media, press releases, a whole host of things. Not sure what that's exactly going to look like, what the job description is going to look like. So Katie, if you can go through the discussion on where the number came from at this point.
So basically, that's a fully loaded salary with benefits and everything. If you remember when Anita was here, she helped us with YouTube, I believe, or before we had Grannicus. To have a hybrid meeting, we need two people in our council chambers, one to run Zoom and one to run Grannicus. So that would be one requirement of this individual. The other is, with all the events and activities that we have in our community, we want to be very proactive in getting the word out, and that's something that Anita did very well. Not only getting, you know, the marketing part of it, but also the coordination part of it. And then finally, as you mentioned, Mayor, the social media, all of those things. And then as this individual's responsibility would be, if the council approved the community engagement committee, then this person could also be the point of contact and coordinator for that activity. So we feel very strongly we'll be able to keep that very.
And again, this is a great step towards some other things that we've been doing, about getting the work to the right, into the right person's hands to be more efficient in the long run. So I did have a chance to listen to last week's workshop, finally, earlier today. But, you know, is this kind of hitting where you guys thought this was going for that discussion?
I value the assertion of the role, a role to find for city staff in this profession. I think to select someone with characteristic skills and abilities to deliver is a really important gesture, and you need to any other, you need any of the other roles to the city, to my knowledge. So I value highly the gesture.
Great.
And Mayor, we also spoke with Chief Simmons, and he feels like this person could also assist the police department in some of their community engagement messaging, information, all of the things that.
Well, I don't think the library as well, any part of the city, yeah. Okay, all right, are there any other comments or questions other than Councilmember Langford?
Yeah, I'd just like to ask Katie, since this is actually a known improved version of what we may have already, how would we be drawing up the background papers that indicate what type of background the individual applicants should have to be successful in this business? Where would we go to get that information?
So AWC has job descriptions. Every single public position in the state of Washington has a job description. And so we're able to go to the job descriptions and kind of find a title and a job descriptions of their responsibility. Larger cities have PIOs, that's kind of probably a step up from what we're looking for. And we would find a job description, we would recruit to the job description, and then we would also identify a salary that's within a range of what other jurisdictions pay.
Thank you.
Great, and obviously, that job description would come before the council for approval.
Yes, it would.
Great. Okay, any other questions, comments on that one? All right, moving on to 1C, camera upgrades in parks. I was looking for somebody else to get into the nuances of this one.
Yeah, so I guess the first question is, how does that fall within the realm of COVID funding?
So we can basically put this under the umbrella of technology expansion, which is explicitly stated. And Katie, can you?
Can you talk closer?
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, okay, just want to make sure the audience can hear. Thanks, Kyle.
Yeah, and also, sorry, and regarding that, lost my train of thought, sorry.
Sorry.
Hey, Mayor, I was going to ask, Jen Camp on, or Trevor, they have firsthand knowledge of our camera systems and what we have and what's deficient. And not that everything's efficient or at the end of its life, but I know that this is not only an addition of new cameras, it's also an upgrade to some of the cameras we have. Chief Simmons has mentioned that some of our cameras aren't as helpful as they would like them to be, and because of the technology, because of where they're located. So this is pretty much an upgrade and an addition to.
Technology has changed a lot. Jen and Trevor are both on.
So that's good information, but it still doesn't lock in on the overarching question of how does these projects come under COVID funding?
And there's a chance that they might not. So we're, the asterisk there, with the possibility that we can submit for reimbursement.
I know that it probably goes without saying for all of us on the city council, but just to express it, so it's on the record, is because there's funding, doesn't mean that we have to spend, okay? Nor do we have to take a shoehorn and try to make a subject fit so it can be covered, okay? So I just wanted to remind everybody that, you know, if we have some money left over, we can send it back. But anyway, I don't want that, I don't want, I don't want us to suffer because of it either.
Right. Yeah.
There's a category, Mayor, that says infrastructure, and it specifically says water sewer, which we don't operate, water sewer, and then also says technology. And so very broad, there's not a lot of detail, but it does include technology as part of an infrastructure investment that is eligible.
So with, that sounds good.
Yeah, Mayor Tim.
One of the challenges that I can remember from two years last year, or one of them versus this year, and I think you were, Chris, you were in on one of those, is that AWC was looking, they said one of the challenges was going to be, is that how are the auditors going to look at this? And Spokane Valley Chamber also was looking at this, is that it's still not defined to us how the auditors will look at how we spend some of this money. And the concern of some of the cities, the mayors were there that brought this up, is that the concern was, if it looks like we could spend the money in this area and we do that, and suddenly the auditors looked at this after the fact and says, well, you weren't authorized to do that, now we're between the rock and the hard place. So some of these cities are saying that, you know, it's great we're getting this funding, but we have to be careful that we don't get ourselves up into it.
I would think there's some of these projects that we're looking at, that whether we can get reimbursed by ARP dollars or not, some of them will need to be done regardless, it's just a matter of identifying those. Do we want to, A, do we want to spend it? Yes or no? Not knowing whether it's eligible. And then if it ends up being eligible, then great, well, we can get reimbursed. But we definitely need to have those discussions along the way. And I, at least in my mind personally, I would think that the camera upgrades in the park would be one of those things that we would probably want to fund regardless. Mayor Tim.
I'm very anxious, but hopeful that we're able to take some of the COVID dollars and put towards these. But I agree with you to say, even if we not, we're not going to be able to use COVID money here, these things need to be done. I think it's really necessary, for as the city grows and moves forward. Especially with the cameras. I can remember when we went to the convention and we saw those cameras for the first time. I mean, you talk about impressive, they're absolutely amazing.
I'm sure it's even improved since then. What we saw was.
So can I ask a question? Is it right now, we have cameras in three of the parks?
And, no, four.
Four.
Who do you think square? No, Pavilion, Rocky Hill, Orchard, and Town Square.
So, so we're looking at upgrades, and we also, besides upgrades, are we looking at expansion possibly in some other areas?
Jen, do you want to answer that question?
Yeah, I haven't had any discussions of expanding cameras, other than we would really like to have them out at the public works yard, and then we really should have them at City Hall. The cameras we're using at both of those facilities right now are fairly homeowner-oriented. So if we could find a camera that was more up to date, that works well in parks, it would likely be a good opportunity to outfit our facilities as well.
A trailhead would be an option too that we probably want to consider.
Oh, yeah. Thanks, Jen.
All right, Councilmember Dunn.
So I just want to, yeah, be very responsive to what staff's observations are as performance for cameras and physical facilities, and especially the public safety with respect to public parks. I think those are investments that are worthy and take important for 2022, yeah, without necessarily regard to their capability effectiveness. I'd also have this observation, I'm grateful for the ability to provide, say, disability to our parks. So when we get there, I hope that these cameras can be, I don't know, discreet is the right word? Sometimes when there's cameras poking and pointing in all directions, it gets a little bit crazy. I think we can find ways to present these cameras that they aren't necessarily physical features, obvious and really exposed in our parks.
Thank you.
All right, for, I just want to give Councilmembers Kurt, Garcia, and Foleer a chance to weigh in. I haven't seen any hands up, I want to make sure I don't skip you. All good?
All good.
All right, okay, so moving on to number two, Sustainable Resources and Operations. So 2A revolves around IT security and dependability with regards to our Wi-Fi, hardware, software, hybrid meetings, professional services, any long-term strategic moves that we want to make. And we're, Kyle and I had a really good meeting last week, just last week, with Executech, and we've got some more information coming in from them for the longer-term strategic plan with regards to migrating to cloud and additional security and whatnot. So the $200,000 is sort of a, you know, a big swag. I think it's, I personally think it could end up being high, but until we start getting some of those numbers in, it's going to be hard to say. But again, I think based on the conversations you've had, Kyle, and what you've seen, most of that should also be eligible.
Correct, and we're casting a pretty broad net here on purpose. And once we get that IT roadmap, it'd get a better idea for some of the pieces that will actually, council will want to handle that, we can get this number tighter.
And, you know, know that obviously, some of this will, some of this will be encompassed non-recurring charges, capital costs upfront, but there will also be some recurring charges. And we need to be aware of that, you know, I don't think any of us really want to put any programs in place that are going to be, that we can pay for for the first year, and then we have to find funding years after that. But there are certain things like IT, where, you know, we're already paying some monthly. We can maybe cover the first, we can probably cover the capital cost, but we'll have to talk about the recurring cost piece of it. So any questions, comments on that one? And we will be sharing additional information as it comes in on those projects. So we're making some really good and quick progress on that, actually. Okay. B, staffing resources. There's a lot here. Katie, you want to come start the conversation on this one?
Right, and so the directors are on the call, so if I don't get it right, raise your hand up. So the first one is our police department. Damon is interested in adding two new officers in different titles, if you will, and also detective, I believe, and a lieutenant. And then also, he has a part-time office assistant that he wants to make full-time. So this is kind of the, our, the staffing level that our police chief is recommending at this time.
Chief, I know Chief, did you want to, did you want to make any comments on that, Chief?
Yes, thank you, members of the council. That actually would equate to actually three FTEs with the promotion of one staff member to the rank of detective, in addition to eliminating a sergeant's position and making that position a lieutenant's position, another administrative position.
Okay, just so to make sure I'm following this correctly, so you're talking eliminate, so going from three sergeants to two, but adding a lieutenant, correct?
Yes, yes.
And then promoting a current officer, so we have a second detective?
Yes.
And then back, then back, and then backfilling that officer, is that where you're going?
Correct.
Okay, and then recorder would be our part-time person, like we said, going full-time?
Yes.
Okay, and what the number we're seeing, I know, I know the answer, but I'm going to ask it anyway. The number we're seeing, 269,000 and change, is fully, the fully loaded difference between what we have now and what you're looking at?
And yes, and I believe that's what Kyle has calculated.
Yes, okay, just want to make sure everybody's following along on the numbers, okay?
So our library, the only change is a part-time person to a. So our library, the only change is a part-time person to a full-time person, no other changes there. On our planning, engineering, building services, add a net increase of one. So as all of you know, we have a vacant engineer, and then Lisa's asking for another position. And fully loaded, we're thinking that's 110. And I do wanna point out cost recovery, because when we have planners and time review folks doing that work, it is reimbursed by the developers. So a big chunk of that will be reimbursed.
And, and a lot of that, you're actually gonna see a couple of those examples today during the action items where we're having to outsource some of that work currently. And I did ask Kyle to put the, pull the numbers for what we've paid so far through the end of July for these services, and right now we're at $68,000.
For consulting services?
Yes, for consulting services to do this work that we'd like to hire somebody full-time to do.
And then our operations group, they are migrating, or they're transitioning, I should say, from seasonal towards full-time FTE. So 15 seasonals would be not included in the budget, and then we would include eight more FTE. And so the net difference is between 538,000 and 225,000.
Well, so, yeah, so the net increase is 323,000 is what you're seeing.
So 15 fewer seasonal and eight more FTE. And this is a combination of a couple of things. One is the state is very, very restrictive when it comes to seasonal employees, and we've had a hard time filling seasonal employees.
Now that we're over 50 people, we've got more restrictions.
Yeah, more restrictions, correct. And so having the eight FTEs, we think that by investing in their growth and development and training, longevity, will be just as or not more efficient in responding to our community needs. Because it's not just the height of the summer season, it's also the responsibilities we have to deliver services in the winter and, and the off-season as well.
Great. Mayor Part 10?
Oh, yes, thank you, Mayor. Uh, the eight full-times, now none of those are part-time, we're elevating to full-time.
There's a separate competitive selection process.
Totally eight, brand new, okay. So my, so my question would be this, is that for the size we are and the parks that we've added in, do we have that much more work? Do we need a full-time, eight new employees? I assume that we do, because it wouldn't be any easier. Can you explain to us?
Jen, can you jump in?
Yeah, so a lot of that, you know, over the last couple of years, as Katie stated, we've struggled to get seasonal help. Thank goodness we've had our returning seasonals, but we can't necessarily count on that year after year. We've been fortunate, so this ensures that we have solid 40-hour-a-week, round-the-clock work year-round, and we're turning out those seasonals. I think that we will get to a point where we still will always have a need for a few seasonals, but it'll be a minimal number. The other thing that I, I was just thinking about was, over the last couple of years with COVID, we have, we have really encouraged our crews, if you're sick, stay home, if you're sick, stay home. Um, I have seen a lot of sick leave used over the last year and a half as compared to prior where people tufted out and came to work. We don't have great overlap for if staff is out. So if staff is out, we're often carrying the load of two or three. I think today we had, including myself, I was out today, we, we had at least five or six crew out today, sick. So we don't have the, the right amount of overlap, and that particularly hurts us in our busy summer season, and it hurts us in our snow season. So this helps us alleviate some of the overlap and the, and the growing pains according to that. We also have a lot of added street scape spaces. So while we haven't added a park in a couple of years, with Orchard Park being the last one, we do continue to add landscaped, maintained street scapes, and we're struggling to keep up with some of those areas, having to contract out. And so there's a huge benefit to doing those things in-house. It's a lot less costly, we can get to the projects more timely than a contractor. It's similar to what we experienced with taking snow in-house. So this helps us accomplish all of that level of service and provide our, our normal and regular expected, you know, weed control and, and clean curb edges and fall leaf pickups, things like that. So we, we've really struggled to keep up with some of the things over the last year and a half particularly.
Um, Mayor Part 10, and then Councilmember Langford.
If I have a follow-up question if I can. Thank you, Jen, I appreciate that explanation. But it leads me to another question, is that if we're telling individuals that if you're sick, stay home, sick, stay home, is it because we're losing those individuals for the, so many hours a day or days, does that lead to why we're sending, needing eight full-time employees to make up the difference there?
It's one of the, it's one of the factors. It's one of the many factors.
Oh, okay, another question, but not for this.
Councilmember Langford.
Yeah, uh, thank you, Councilmember Kennedy. My question was along the same lines, Jen. If we have 15 seasonal people available and we're struggling to keep up with the demand because of sickness, how can we reduce to eight and expect to keep up with it?
Well, seasonals aren't full-time. So there's that.
If they're, if they're outs, if there's outsick, they're outsick regardless whether they're full-time or part-time.
Right.
So how do we, the original question, how do we expect to maintain with eight when we can't maintain with 15?
Because the, the eight being full-time have greater responsibilities and expectations than our seasonals. And we haven't, we've struggled to even fill out our fully budgeted seasonals from year to year. So we haven't even had the full load of seasonals that we've had budgeted the last couple of years. I don't know if that answers your question or not.
Thank you.
So Jen, are you just trying, trying to say it's easier to recruit and retain those employees?
Right.
And, and so I'm assuming you're gonna be making advantage of some additional cross-training opportunities since they'll be full-time permanent?
Right, there's more overlap in an FTE than there is in a seasonal.
All right.
So I can add something.
Go ahead, Katie.
Just real quick, something that we've never had since I've been here is a facilities manager. And so when Jen and I spoke about our facilities, which is our HVAC, our AC, our generators, windows, I could, you know, we have some facilities that need to be taken care of. And one of this, this is, one of these is a new, one of these FTEs is a facilities team. And that person is gonna be in charge of not only the keeping the systems going, the filters changed, um, the cleaning of our facilities, and this includes restrooms in the, in the, in the park. I think another benefit of having eight new full-time year-round versus 15 for only six months is the inefficiency of that. Because you have people that, they come in, we train them, and then they get, you know, and obviously if they get sick, they stay home and all that. We have Saturday assignments, we have Sunday assignments because of the activity level in our community. So when you roll that all together, by having them around the clock, they can do things in the winter that helps make the spring and summer easier, that between taking care of equipment, taking care of storage, and those kinds of things. So it's hard to say a one-for-one, but I think eight full-time people as opposed to 15 part-time people, they're very limited in what, what their assignments can be. And, and as Jen said, we haven't been able to keep them fully hyped because they come and go. Some need to go back to teach, some need to go back to school, some need for another permanent job. And so there's a constant rotation of people in and people out, and it's somewhat inefficient.
And costly from an administrative side, yeah. Go ahead, Councilmember Dunn.
I just recognize the distinction of a seasonal or a part-time seasonal employee from a full-time employee, and the shift of responsibilities that gets. I believe that the full-time, uh, full-time responsibility employee has more use and I say total effectiveness for the city.
Only if they show up to work and not sick.
Yeah, agreed. Councilmember Foyer, Kurt, let's see, Councilmember Foyer, and hopefully we've got your mics updated, updated and working.
I don't know, can you hear me now?
We can.
Perfect, thank you. Um, I, I guess, one of my questions is, is as we move into our budget discussions, these, this topic's gonna come up at that time, probably in great detail, I'm assuming, um, being that it looks like we're talking about maybe adding the potential of 12 to 15 full-time positions. I guess, and it seems like there's a lot of movement within the police department. Maybe, maybe what would be helpful for me and maybe the others is, do we have any kind of a organizational chart on who does what today versus what these proposals, how it will change the makeup of those, of the departments, including going from 15 seasonals to eight full-times? Maybe, maybe it would help us understand a little better of who's going where and what they're doing, if we could see it, if we could see it on paper.
Kind of looking for a little bit of a roadmap, Phil, what you're asking, you know, this is where we are, this is where, where we wanna be with this. I see Chief Simmons unmuted himself, but it looks like he probably wants to respond.
And please don't take, please don't take me the wrong way, I understand where there's gonna be, we're always gonna be having this discussion as the city grows. It just wa, I just wanna make sure I feel good about, for me personally, having a strong grasp on where we are today. Thank you.
Brother, have you get more information than too little? Go ahead, Chief.
Uh, of course, for us, by the end of the week, each council member should have our five-year strategic plan, so that'll assist in explaining some of this a little bit more as far as our long-term goals and where we stand right now. So you'll have that by Friday, and I can include what the future organizational chart would look like, as well as a, a separate document that I have actually for, it's a little bit of a rationale behind creating another administrative position, so I can get that to the city council by the end of the week.
Great, and we'll work on that for the other ones as well. Okay, anybody else have any questions or comments on the, the staffing resources? I know I didn't see any questions or anything on planning, engineering, building services. Councilmember FDIC, your hand up.
Thank you. Um, it's, uh, it's good to be talking about this more comprehensively because Councilmember Foyer and Member Langford, Langford, excuse me, are talking about something that is even more inconsistent with our current staffing at the higher levels, the executive levels. So we have one, we have one department head, one department head here, one department head here, and should they take the same route, they have vacations, or they have sick leave? What we've done is we've kind of left our, we're naked. Our, our staffing is naked and we cannot operate. We, we have no, we have no room to cover those areas. We may do double duty with someone who's not as proficient in that area, so they're working in it temporarily, and then the job's not really being done to the standards that we need for our community. So we, we may wanna discuss even more, I've heard it discussed before, but even more on getting assistance to our directors, maybe having an assistant to our administrator, someone else we can call on with the expertise, perhaps not the exact expertise as the one who is heading the department, but someone else. Because we are, we, we're spending almost, what, $30 million almost in this community, and we have one member here, one member there. So while I like that they're adding, I see what's happening here in regards to the staffing and why you want to make people more full-time, having more obligations and responsibilities. They may tend to be more dependable. But we also at some point need to talk about having an assistant to the planning department, having an assistant to Parks and Recs, and not just having ourselves try to maintain the status quo with one person here and one person there, if we can all maybe consider that. Thank you.
Thank you. I, I'll go ahead, Councilmember Kurt, and then I'll just have Katie just kinda talk at a high level on, on how we, how we do do the backups right now. And go ahead, Councilmember Kurt.
And I just wanted to say that I, I appreciate that we are looking at investing in, in all of these areas and really considering what we need now and in the future. Um, I'm really wanting to know from the department heads, you know, coming up, if, if this is enough. Because, you know, we're talking about making sure that people have time to take vacations and their sick leave, and, you know, that, who knows what's gonna happen with COVID, honestly. So I think it is important that people do stay home when they're sick, and sometimes they have to be quarantined and all that. Um, and people do have babies and go on vacation and, and have the right to do all those things. So I don't, I'd like echoing Councilmember Garcia, I want people to feel like they can do those things, they can live their life outside of work, and I wanna be supportive of that. And I wanna make sure the city receives, as she said, the same level of service that they expect and that, that we expect for everybody. So I'm, I'm excited about that everybody's put some thought into, into what's needed, and I'm excited to have more conversations about it as we get into the budget season.
Great, thank you for your comment. Katie, just to, because I know we only have a little over 15 minutes left. It seems such a high level, and then obviously there'll be more discussions going forward.
So really appreciate the comments. I value our directors every single day. They bring a tremendous amount of experience and efficiency. What bogs us down is when they have to do administrative work, or typing, or filing, or recording, or buying, or selling, you know, not commodities, purchasing things in contracts. So we want our directors to be very efficient. And sometimes we're not, I don't feel like they feel they're efficient because they don't have the support staff. That's kind of part one. Part two is that our directors are very capable and they have a lot of flexibility. So we want them to have the flexibility to take their time off and all that. I'll be honest with you, when they, when they take time off, they're always emailing and texting and calling. So I wish that they were enjoying their vacation a little bit more. But I appreciate the recognition. I, we talk about it a lot amongst the directors about what do they need and how can we support them more? And, you know, it is, COVID created a new dimension that I think it's affected all of us, even all of our council members. It's affected our, our city employees, it's affected our directors, and we're working through it. I, I can't think that it's a downer, but there is a different work environment that we have to be aware of, and I think we have to find solutions, I think we have to be smart, and we have to be compassionate for our people. And that, those are the values that I think are important, is recognizing what our directors bring to the table.
And we're continuing to have those, obviously have those staffing discussions. We've already made some of the good steps. We, we've got it, we now have an HR manager, we have IT person, all those things. Used to be handled by our finance director, so we've already removed some of those things off to people who are more attention. Well, yeah, I'm getting there for the, our, we do have a new accounting tech, starting September, September 7th, so that's another addition, and we're, the plan for her is to not only do payroll, but to do some of these purchasing activities that, again, you know, might, might focus on strategic and, and efficiency. And if we can have purchasing centralized, that person can, you know, be, be a subject matter expert instead of somebody trying to reinvent the wheel pretty much every time they, they go, and be, and have that subject matter expert on board. So you'll see more of that, and so I absolutely appreciate the comments with regards to support for the, for the director level, and we will continue to have those conversations. Okay, um, are there any other questions on the staffing? I know we kinda jumped over planning, engineering, building services. Is there any questions for Lisa on the, on that? It's the one, and we talked about it being cost recovery, and I didn't wanna jump past that. Okay, all right, so then we'll go to number three, quality facilities and infrastructure. So I, Kyle and I kinda went through this a couple of times. I, I asked him to split this out a little bit, because we all know capital facilities plans tend to go over year to year. We have things that might have been planned for '21 that aren't going to, you know, be finished or maybe even started this year. So I kinda wanna look at it, you know, going out of ways, being that we're focusing on 2022. So I know the items that are on here, Trailhead Public Works Yard, Kramer Parkway Overpass, and Asset Management, all of those are already in the capital facilities plan, they're kind of, you know, funded in the different years. We do have some catch-up to do on some of those. But I, I understand at the end of the meeting, I guess there was the request to add the dog park and community pool. I know, pretty sure community pool is not on the capital facilities plan, I think the dog park's kind of far down. So I, I wanted to get the council to weigh in on whether or not that's staying for the, for consideration for 2022. I think there's some, some discussions going around, maybe design, you know, where is the priority? Because I know the community pool kinda got pushed way out or even came off of the list. So I wanna open that up for discussion. Who wants to go first? Councilmember Dunn?
Uh, so I think the capital facilities plan, as it was asserted along with its prioritization matrix, is what we should use as a deciding factor or we choose to act on, especially considering just the 2022 budget. Um, recognizing individual projects with their priority statement, I don't think it's necessary. I think that the capital facilities plan should reflect the detail level of the actual projects that are considered to be in focus.
Councilmember Seavers?
I agree with that.
Oh, you do or don't?
I do agree.
Okay, I thought you, I think you said just.
I said just, yeah, okay.
Got it. Anybody else? Mayor Part 10, Councilmember? Anybody else? Mayor Perren, Councilmember Langford?
Yeah, I'm fine with that. The, uh, at this particular point, at this particular point in time, I believe that we have enough on our plate for twenty-twenty-two. Okay, I don't think we need to add a whole lot more. So those two items, as important as they are, at this juncture, they could be dropped as far as I'm concerned.
And, and like Councilmember Dunn and Severs just said, we, we have the, the separate but parallel process that we go through every budget season with the capital facilities plan. So that's where the detail is tracked and then prioritized and we're budgeted.
And both of those appear on that.
Yeah.
Well, I'm not sure about the pool, but the dog park does, does appear on that. So that can always be resurrected as we talk about the facilities.
Great. All right, anybody else have any? Oh, Councilmember Kurt, I think I see your hand up.
Um, I, I think, I'm glad that this is broken out by budget year, because I think that's super helpful. I think the, the balance that I'm trying to walk though is that we have had some interest from the community in the community pool and in the community dog park. So trying to be responsive to that, and also acknowledging that even though we have the capital facilities plan, we haven't updated that this year that I'm aware of in this process. So, and we haven't done any prioritization of it this year. So if we need to do that, I'm happy to do that work. But I also wanna balance the, the projects that we do have with also considering what the community has, some of the community has come forward with. And I think that perhaps if the Community Engagement Commission goes forward, they can help us in that work too with identifying some of the community priorities.
Appreciate the input. The capital facilities plan is part of the budgeting process, so that will come forward for the council to discuss and fund and move priorities around during the budget process. So thank you for that input. All right, is there any more comments on that? Because I know we're running, running short, I wanna be able to give people a bit of a break. Number four really is about ARP funding mechanisms, and four B is successful implementations of one through three, which is, would be a great milestone to hit with getting all those done. Oh, Phil, I see your hand, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. So I just wanted to verify what I heard. Are we all in agreement that we're gonna remove the dog park and the community pool from the priorities list?
Yeah, that's what it sounds like. And, and what I'm hearing from everybody is, you know, the, the capital facilities and infrastructure list in number three is really driven by the capital facilities plan. So whether or not we want to continue to break all of these out, we may, I think it may be just a better way to practice is refer to the capital facilities plan on this.
We're agreed we're gonna remove them, yes?
That's what it looks like. I'm seeing, I see heads nodding, I'm going back and forth.
Thank you.
So, I'm sorry, I'm a mayor, but what I, what I thought I heard you say is that our budget priorities would be done in the budget process, which we have not gotten to. So are we removing something that could be considered from the budgeting process before we get to the budgeting process? Is that what I'm understanding?
No, we're talking about this list that we're looking at that's in front of you, that Kyle has up on, on the screen.
Yeah, I'm reading, yeah. So for, for this purpose, for this thing that's up on the screen, we're removing the dog park and the community pool only to then have that possibly be considered in the capital facilities planning process that's part of the budgeting process? Is that, am I understanding the process correctly?
Yeah.
It may not be considered.
So the capital facility plan goes out multiple years. We're talking about twenty-twenty-two. So the, the, what I'm hearing from, from the people making the comments is, you know, it's, I think the better process going forward for number three is to basically remove the detail and refer to capital facilities plan, which is a living document that is reviewed every year. So this detail would go away.
But then we would revisit it in the capital facilities planning process, in the budget process?
Yeah, that's something that happens every year, correct.
And Mayor Ryan. And so Councilmember Kurt, one thing that I think is very helpful for the council to identify these priorities is because then the mayor and Kyle can work together to put together the twenty-two, twenty-twenty-two budget with these resources to deliver these services and projects. If the dog park and community pool were included in the twenty-twenty-two budget as a priority, we don't have, we have not identified the resources that would be needed to be added. So if you were to remove the dog park and the community pool as a priority in twenty-twenty-two, but keep it in the capital facilities plan, then when it comes around, we would identify the resources needed to do that work.
Mayor Perren?
Yes, if I can clarify for all of our benefit, I looked at the capital facilities plan yesterday and again today. Dog park, we have nineteen items on it. The dog park is number sixteen, sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen, and nineteen had no funding whatsoever. And community pool is not on there at all.
And so that will come up for discussion during the budget process, whether or not those get put back on there or rep, or moved around, or even funded. Okay, all right, it is six fifty-four. We're gonna take a quick break and come back at seven for our regular meeting. Thanks, everybody. Well, my apologies, everybody.
Sorry, yeah.
We did the invocation and the pledge on mute. Apologies.
Thank you.
I wish, I wish somebody had waved us down.
That's COVID.
Gotta love, gotta love technology. Okay, so we're all, we'll restart the roll call here. Councilmember Dunn?
Happy to be here in person.
Councilmember Kurt? Councilmember Foyer?
Present.
Councilmember Severs? Langford?
Present.
Councilmember Garcia? And Mayor Perren?
And I am also.
Hey, all present and accounted for. We'll move on to the agenda, so welcome Mayor Perren.
Thank you, uh, thank you, Mayor, for my notes here. For general approval of post, a couple of them to begin with is that you have to add on, have to add on to action items, contract with Central Valley Resource Officer, and also contract with E W U Security. And both these items come into the cost literature, which I'll, Kyle will be, Kyle will.
Okay, just, I'm hearing, I'm not quite sure what we're hearing. So just to, just to clarify, so the motion to add number ten B seven for Central Valley School District School Resource Officer contract and ten B eight, the contract with Eastern Washington University?
Correct. And the other thing would be is that we have sent out a notice that we're gonna have an executive meeting tonight. I mean, questions, we don't have that. The subject that was gonna be discussed, visiting with our attorney, is, we're starting in a gray area of what we wanted to discuss, what the council wanted to discuss, staff and stuff, is that it's really not appropriate at this point to be in an open meeting, and it really doesn't qualify to be an executive meeting. So based on that, I'd like to extend that also from you.
Yeah, so, yeah, well, we just won't use that meeting notice? Okay, great. So we've got the motion to add the two items under ten B. You have a second?
Second.
All right, move the second. Any discussion on that adjustment to the agenda? Questions? All right, hearing none? All in favor of the amendments to the agenda? Say aye.
Aye, aye.
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? All right, I have it. The amendments are approved? Moving the agenda? Amended?
Yes, a motion to accept the agenda as amended.
Second.
Move the second, any discussion? All right, all in favor of approving the agenda as amended, please say aye.
Aye, aye.
Any opposed? All right, I have it. All right, citizen comments? All right, now is a citizen's chance to, to make any comments they would like to do to the council. You'll have three minutes, you'll have a timer up top. If you have a comment that you'd like to make, please, chat to our meeting manager, Todd Henderson. But if you guys, if you have a guy, mute yourselves if you're not, we're getting some feedback. Thank you. So if you have a question, or I'm sorry, a comment to make, go ahead and send the chat to Todd Henderson. He will let me know through the chat that somebody is waiting. Again, you'll have three minutes. And if you don't have anything at this time, there will be another opportunity at the end of the meeting. And I don't see any, and I don't see any message from Todd.
Brian Asmus?
Hi, hi, Brian. Go ahead, sorry, I didn't see anything from Todd. I didn't see you, so I need to move you there. There you are. All right, go ahead.
Great, thank you, Mayor, members of the, Mayor, members of the council, good to see you all, even virtually. So tonight I'm here as your Spokane Valley Fire Department Fire Commissioner, and just wanted to report on a couple of things that we have going on. So I put in your mailbox at City Hall yesterday, our, oh, you can't see it, sorry, our annual report. So please, if you get an opportunity, take a look at that. It's for the year of twenty-twenty, and it highlights some of the activities of your Valley Fire Department. In addition, I'm gonna let you know also that the Valley Fire Department is very proud to announce that we are accredited again for the third time by the Commission on Fire Accreditation International. It's the third time. We were accredited originally in two thousand eleven, again in two thousand sixteen, and now again. So accreditation is a comprehensive assessment of what we do as a fire service for our community. And proud to say we are one of only two hundred internationally accredited fire agencies in the entire world. So a lot to be proud of there. And final thing, I have to report on behalf of the Fire District, as you might have heard, that the Spokane Valley Fire Department has implemented a new online apartment manager safety training course. There are six different sessions that people can sign up for. They include legal obligations, responsibilities, CPR, stop to bleed and fall prevention, inspection processes, and department access, fire safety in the home, evacuation and escape planning, and smoke alarms and fire extinguisher maintenance. So those that are interested in signing up for that program through the Fire Department can go to SpokaneValleyFire.com, and you can sign up for those courses. So that's all I have on behalf of the Fire Department, and thank you for your time tonight.
All right, thank you very much. It's just a quick follow-up question, Commissioner Asmus. Would those classes be open to individual landlords as well? You know, some of it wouldn't apply because of individual properties, but is that something that they would be able to take advantage of?
Yes, absolutely. It's open to that landlords as well.
Okay, thank you. And if you would like, if you could, maybe send a link to that information to, to Tate of the City, and we'll share that on our website as well.
Great, we will do that, thank you.
Thank you. All right, any other, I've got a chat, let's see. Oh, Jamie Morrow? We have you listed for a comment, thanks for joining us.
Thank you. I wanna thank you guys for giving me the opportunity to speak this evening. I am a member of this community, as well as a mother to school-aged children, as well as I sit on the board for the nonprofit, for the Green Acres Middle School PTA. We will be doing our application and stuff for the American Rescue Plan Act, and we just wanted to put our faces with this application, just because it's so important. In twenty-twenty, we no longer were capable of supporting our students, staff, or teachers. We sponsor so many different programs, from the Science Olympiad to Math is Cool, the Reflection Art Program, books for the library, school dances, family nights out, the Honor Society, lanyards, eighth grade and sixth grade welcome celebrations, music and athletic equipment. And due to COVID-nineteen, our clubs and athletics department had lost so much, so much funding that it caused a differently, an impact on the schools. We missed out on approximately eight dine-outs, six different dances, our cookie fundraisers, our flamingo fundraisers, which ultimately cost the school about twenty-eight thousand dollars that we normally supply as the PTSA nonprofit. The school now is looking to lean on us so much more than what they have before. They didn't collect ASP funds from families to take pressure off, and we had only been able to accumulate about three thousand dollars last year. With that being said, we will definitely be submitting our, but I wanna put a face team to that and let you guys know how important it is and what these schools need in this small community. And I know Green Acres sits on the border of Green Acres, obviously. We're not just totally a Liberty Lake-supported school. But it's just so important that these kids have a normal twenty-one, twenty-two school year. And so I just wanted to put a face with the name so that you guys know that these kids are impacted, and we want them to have so much more normalcy this coming school year. Police needs to replace so many different items that we're looking to do. So thank you again from the Green Acres students, parents, teachers, and staff. We look forward to hopefully having a great next school year. Thank you, guys.
Thanks for coming, we appreciate it. Look forward to getting the application.
Thank you.
All right, and I believe, Anne Funtzen, you have, must have a written comment?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. The city did receive a written comment this afternoon, which was provided to you via email. It is from Liberty Lake residents Steve Peterson and Charmaine Peterson, and they commented in support of a Community Engagement Commission.
Thank you. All right, so that should be in our email. Thanks for bringing that, letting us know. Thanks, Anne. All right, so one last chance, anybody else with aces and comment? Again, you'll have a chance at the end of the meeting as well.
Point of order, Mayor. If I may ask this question. I know we have a policy that, you know, any written comments that come in, it's given to the council, but it's not read into, which that was not. But is it allowed to express an opinion?
Same thing.
It's the same thing.
Should, should even the opinion?
No.
Yeah.
Be read?
Good point. So just, so going forward, we will limit it to who it's from and the topic.
Right, thank you.
Thank you.
And we'll make sure, we, we will be doing the final iteration. And we'll make sure, we, we will be doing the final iteration of the rules of procedure. We'll make sure that's clear as well. Thanks for bringing that up, Mayor Portem. All right, we will be moving on. So announcements, proclamations, special presentations. I'll turn this over to Chief Damon Simmons to introduce our newly sworn-in officer, Jennifer McAnally.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, members of the council, and if you'll join me in welcoming our newest member of our team, Officer Jennifer McAnally. Officer McAnally comes to our agency and the city of Liberty Lake with a wealth of experience in the criminal justice system. She graduated from the Washington State Criminal Justice Training Commission, Basic Law Enforcement Academy, in July of 2020, working one year for the Spokane Police Department. Officer McAnally also worked 20 years for Spokane County Juvenile Courts, two years for Spokane County District Court probation, and three years at Martin Hall Juvenile Detention. In addition to her criminal justice professional education, Officer McAnally holds an associate and applied arts degree in applied science administration of justice corrections from Spokane Community College, and a bachelor, bachelor of liberal arts, or excuse me, liberal studies degree with an emphasis in social services from Whitworth University. Welcome, Officer Jennifer McAnally.
Okay, welcome. We're gonna, now we're gonna put you on the spot, Jennifer.
All right, I hope you can hear me. Can you hear me?
Yep.
All right. It's my pleasure to be a part of your community. I look forward to working for the city of Liberty Lake, and day two, everything's going great, and it's a, it's a wonderful place to be.
All right, well, so far, so good. You came back for day two, so it's a good time.
And she didn't call him sick.
I know. Thank, thank, thank you, Jennifer. And just to let everyone know, I have received a plethora of telephone calls from criminal justice professionals all over the county, letting us know that we have an outstanding, outstanding person in Jennifer and an outstanding worker. So we're really excited to have her.
Well, welcome. We look forward to seeing you in action.
All right, thank you, guys.
You.
Thank you, Jennifer.
All right, I think that's the only special presentation we have. We'll move on to reports. Are there any city council reports? Councilmember Dunn?
Um, I want to put a warm invitation to everybody for the coming weekend, and the busiest weekend for entertainment here in the city of Liberty Lake. Friday night, the movie in the park is Harry Chamber, Harry Potter and the Chamber of Secrets. Saturday night, the movie is Rea and the Last Dragon, and Saturday afternoon is Midsummer Night's Dream. Want to just say, please welcome one and all to the event. Watch closely as we, you know, we close the event, if there's any concerns about putting them on, but spoken otherwise, but we look forward to being, have these events in the community.
And all sponsored by Quandis and S T C U? Yes, no others? Okay. All right, thank you. Always enjoy our community partners. Anybody else have a city council report? Cindy, uh, okay, I do not see any yet. All right, we will move on to Planning Commission. Jamie Barrett, I think I saw you. There you are.
Hi, good evening, everyone.
Thanks for coming. So Jamie's our Planning Commission, and she is going to do her, their report tonight. Thanks for coming, Jamie.
Absolutely. So as I'm sure that council is aware, the Planning Commission met on August 11th to host a public hearing regarding the emergency shelters transitional and supportive housing. Addition to our, our code, as you are aware, we had to change some definitions of housing based on the house bills that were passed. And for the most part, we did accept changes as outlined by city staff. One of the major changes that we made to the, or proposed amendment, which you'll see in your packet, is to make sure that with the distance between the housing that for beds that are over, or housing that supports over 20 beds, that those would be two miles apart at least, and also a quarter mile from a six transit location. And I'm happy to answer any questions if you have them.
I'm not seeing any.
All right, well, thank you.
Well, that was short and sweet. Thanks, Jamie.
Sure thing.
Okay, next. City, oh, skip myself. There we go. All right, um, I sent out the, my updated report yesterday to the council. Hopefully you had a chance to go through that. I, I mentioned earlier during the, during the workshop about our continuing discussions with Executech with regards to our I T upgrades and strategic plan. So that's a major focus right now that, that Kyle and I and Todd are working through. So keep an eye out on my future reports for some updates on that. The fun part of what, what's going on is, so the Lions Club is hosting their bed races at the Valley Fest Parade this year, and they challenged us to have a couple teams. So we've identified a fund under Special Events Business, Business and Community Support, where we can support up to three teams. It's $175 per team. We're hoping to get enough participation. If we'd like to have a real good showing, this will help with our wellness program. So Heidi and I have been kind of talking about that little bit. So I believe the deadline to sign up is the first week in September or something. So I will get, I will get more information out to the council. We've got it out to the employees. So we'd love for, love for the council and even some of our commissions to participate. So that, that's a fun item. That'll be in September. It's, it's really fun to watch. I got to judge one year. So maybe we can even get our city attorney in on the action. Big change, S R T C, our new executive director started yesterday. She comes to us from Florida, big 2,800 mile move, I think it was. So looking forward to getting to know her better. And there was also an internal promotion, Eve, and I forgot, I apologize, should put Eve's last name on here. She's been with the organization close to 20 years, I think. They created a new promotion, a new position for her and promoted her to deputy director, which will help her grow as well and have some better backfill for the executive director. So again, looking forward to working with her. And we'll miss Kevin Wallace, who's been the interim director for, wow, close to a year now, I think, at least. So he, for those who don't know, he was the former director, retired, and then came back to the firm while he went through this search process. Intended a fairly short webinar or Zoom meeting with Kathy Morris Rogers a week or so ago. They've been having continuing conversations with Governor Engle's office with regards to masks and CDC recommendations. So hopefully we'll continue to see some updates on that. Little bit of detail in my report on the Washington Economic Development Association. I went through last week, but the, the most amazing part, in addition to the classroom piece of it, was getting a tour of the podium downstairs. What? Downstairs, downtown. What an amazing facility. World-class events coming, new events being put together for this. They're hosting the World Finals, I think it is, in February of 2022. It's not quite ready to open. It's amazing facility. They're also looking at being able to bring some concerts in there as well. It'll be a major draw from all over the West Coast. So if, once they start opening for some more tours, I highly encourage you to get down there. An interesting piece is that the hydraulic ramp curves are actually made here in Spokane. I didn't have a chance to ask who actually made them, so that was really interesting. So they ordered them, and they actually came from here in town. Valley Chamber, nothing really new to report there. A lot going on with the G S I Advantage Spokane. That's an extra service that we pay for. They're putting some targeted campaigns out there, targeting San Francisco, Chicago, Seattle, and L A. They're concentrating on life science industries first, and then next will be advanced manufacturing. That's really it for my report. So now on to, oh, one more thing, I almost forgot. City or, there's four ordinances out there right now that you guys will be taking a look at soon. They all, they're all very old. They're in the third, numbers 30, I think it's 32, 33, 34, and 35. They revolve around the confirmation process of certain positions. Back in January, so when I started looking at these, I think I looked at them when we started the process and we ended up hiring Kyle. There is one ordinance for a city administrator. There's one ordinance for a police chief. There's one for clerk treasurer, which that position doesn't exist anymore. And, and there's one for a city attorney. So what we're looking at doing is, A, updating the one for the city attorney, just make it relevant and make it correct if there's anything that needs to be changed. And then merging the other three into one to make, basically have it, have it set so that the, the mayor would appoint city administrator, director level, and the police chief, all with council confirmation. Right now, that's not how it is set. So we want to get those kind of on an even, even playing field and update the ordinance for, for you guys. So that will be coming.
And I'd like to point out, additional thing that has to be added to that was the commissioners, because presently commissioners are appointed the council votes on that.
Yeah, I'm trying to think. I don't think those weren't part of those. Yeah, we'll just see what ordinances are under. Yeah.
But if anything else, we want to make sure that we're marrying what we're doing now. It is successful.
Yeah, yeah. And I just thought it was, and again, these were written when the first city first incorporated. They're, they're due for a revamp now that we have more director positions, and we no longer have a clerk slash treasurer position. We actually have a finance director.
Was, wasn't one of them ordinance seven?
Seven, 33, 34, and 35.
Seven, starting on 2001.
Yeah. So it's been a while. And I believe there's also a condition in there where they have to be bonded, which I don't think we have ever done. So. In foreign language. Yeah, yeah, we'll, we'll fix it. But, you know, we talked in the past about making it through some of these older ordinances, and we're starting to make some headway to get some of this updated. Now, go ahead.
So what we'll be in a position is that those copies will be given to the council for, to be able to read and get, come up to speed, and then we'll send it on the agenda. And I would recommend we put it on the agenda as soon as possible after the council has an opportunity to read them and sort of where we're going.
Yeah. And we'll, when we send those out, we'll have some recommendations to what the changes would be. Obviously, we'd like feedback. All right, Katie, you're up.
Okay, so Mayor, members of the council, good evening. The matrix, I always start with the matrix. I love that it's dinners or bad news, but we do not have a 7:00 PM workshop tonight. However, we have five workshops on September 7th. Well, let me share with you what those are. So we have three at 6:00 PM. The first one is on Trailhead Financing Strategy. So Q Seavers and Kyle are going to share with you their evaluation of the funding strategies for Trailhead. Anything else you want to add, or does that pretty much cover it?
That pretty much covers it. We have some other pieces that need reconciled with the meeting.
The next workshop is on our personnel manual. So like the ordinances that the mayor talked about, our personnel manual needed to be updated on many different levels to be legally current with what's required by the state of Washington, as well as correct titles and time off and benefits and all that. Heidi Workman is going to do that workshop, and our goal is that the council is familiar with what is being recommended by the council, answer any questions that you may have, and then it would come back to you to be adopted as another tale. So maybe after we show it to you on September 7th, then we will also be taking it out to our point.
Yeah, so just a little bit more background, and I don't expect that to actually take a lot of time if we, if the plan goes well. So Heidi, if you want to jump in. So the directors have reviewed it. I reviewed it. We gave some feedback. The attorneys reviewed it, and our, our risk management company has reviewed it. So it's been all through all of those channels. What I'd like to do is get that out to the council ahead of time and have you guys submit any questions back to Heidi ahead of the meeting. So we can have those questions ready to be answered and put to bed. At this point, unless there's something glaring, I would not expect any edits to be requested. You know, this is, this is Heidi's wheelhouse and our attorney and our, our risk management company's wheelhouse. So we'll get that out, and we'll get, get you a date as to where we want those questions back.
Excellent. Yeah, we'll probably get to you by the end of the week, and then the questions can come in, and we'll address them. And then the last 6:00 PM workshop is our favorite, which is the rules of procedure. So this will be, we've gone through it many times, line by line, and so we will include that, and it should also be a fairly quick review. And then at 7:00 PM, we have two proposed workshops. One is on the A R P for nonprofits. So this is an opportunity for crowds to, we'll review these back. And then finally, council member, Mayor Portem, Kenzie Asson, we discuss utility tax. So those are both on for 7:00 PM.
And the date again for that is?
September 7th.
Right.
Okay. Okay, so then jumping back to the rest of my report, like I said, this is really a joint effort by a lot of people. So I think next up is Chief Simmons, who's going to, we've already introduced Jennifer McAnally, our new police officer, but there were some other resource officers and the E W U contract.
Thank you, Katie. Um, one of the most important assets in our community is our children. This is the reason why the Central Valley School District and the Liberty Lake Police Department bring before today a contract between the city and the school district allowing, allowing for the housing of one police officer in the district for the 2021, 2022 school year. Now, as a former resource officer, I cannot put into words what value and positive impacts a school resource officer adds to both the school and the community. Master Police Officer Mark Holdhouse will assume the duties of school resource officer for our agency. Officer Holdhouse is very knowledgeable in all aspects of school safety and security, as well as topics related to law enforcement in our schools. So at this time, I would like to defer to Officer Holdhouse and then our former chief and security director, Brian Asmus, for their comments.
Thank you, Chief. Can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, Madam Mayor, Mayor, members of the city council, Chief asked me to just speak a little bit about kind of what I do and why we're important. I've spent two years at Selkirk Middle School, getting to know the kids, the staff, and the education setting there. I've participated in some career fairs, classroom visits, and answering kids' questions. I've done some home visits with the counselor, especially with families who weren't responding during the COVID times. We would reach out to them to see if they needed any additional resources or laptops. I'm present before, during lunches, and after school. And then during COVID, I would go outside with the staff and take temperature checks of about 100 kids, myself, every morning, which was a, one, one benefit of COVID is getting a little bit of FaceTime with each kiddo in the mornings. So I would participate in some threat assessment training as well with the school administration, and then, and of course, investigate crimes. In the two years that I was at Selkirk, only one student was booked. The other one was able to refer charges. So, you know, out of 650 kids, that's, that's pretty good. I'm one of three S R Os in the state who participate in a school safety council group with other stakeholders. We helped draft House Bill 1216 and create training standards for S R Os and security folks statewide. Why we're important is we build relationships with the kids and help them understand that we're not there to take them to jail, but just the opposite. We're there to ensure their safety and provide alternatives to jail if necessary. Some kids and even some teachers aren't fond of the police in the current day misguided media trend. So my goal is to, to change that, that attitude, that tempo. For the kids who do commit crimes, we know those kids, and we know their history and those situations, and we know that the charges can be referred to the prosecutor rather than being booked in the jail. And then with the counselor and their families, we work together to provide them all alternative resources and help to get them through these, some of these situations. So again, we're, we're not there to put these kids in jail, but rather to help them through some bad situations and build better relationships with the kids. So I appreciate your time, and that's, that's about all I have for now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Portem, and then Councilmember Dunn. Oh, Councilmember Dunn, go ahead.
I'm just grateful, Officer Holdhouse, for your descriptions and actions down at Selkirk. To be direct, I, I wasn't aware of all the contributions that our officers are able to make on campus at our schools. Thank you for your service, and I'm grateful for our ability to contribute to public safety inside of our schools.
It's a pleasure. Thank you.
I can't pass up the opportunity of having Officer Mark on the phone and give him a shout out, that what a great job I feel he was doing. I had the opportunity some time ago to be at Career Day with Officer Mark, and why I say that is because some of the students came up to me and referred to us Officer Mark. So a cue, cue is that I was the only guy standing without a uniform. So kids were all lined up and waiting to talk to Officer Mark, and a young kid came up to me and says, who are you? So I told him my name, and he says, what are you? And I says, well, I'm a councilmember of Liberty Lake. Oh, okay, I want to go talk to Officer Mark. So when it comes to a pecking order. So when it comes to a pecking order, the thing I was most impressed at, that a lot of times you see a police officer and a lot of individuals are intimidated because of that, especially if you have a driver's license. The thing that I really appreciated from being at Career Day that day, that I observed these kids so friendly towards Mark, which goes to the credit of the officer and what he is instilling in these kids. I was impressed, so I think we're doing a great job, Officer Mark. I compliment you.
All right, it looks like Councilmember Garcia has her hand up as well.
Thank you, Officer. I am very pleased to know that your relationship with the students at the school goes beyond what the media presence or anyone else recognizes as best practice, that you have expressed to us that your goal is to reroute the thinking, change the mindset, and show that both children and police officers alike can relate to each other, and there's a positive outcome when you do, and that only the alternatives to those positive outcomes are last resort. So that is a very positive posture, and it is welcomed. And aside from what is in the media, when we hear it from our own, from our officers here at home, we know what our children are being treated to when they have to interact with you. Thank you very much.
Anybody, before Chief goes on to the Eastern Washington University agreement. Looks like you're on to the next one, Chief.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As I stated in the agenda item document, there have been several unforeseen and unintended consequences caused by the implementation of recent police reform laws. These laws have not only affected fully commissioned law enforcement officers, but also those with limited commissions. With that said, the limited commission of security officers used by the Eastern Washington University Police for security service has been revoked. The loss of these security officers has left Chief Jewel Day of the Eastern Washington University Police Department in need of a replacement augmentation force. Chief Day is asking the city of Liberty Lake and the Liberty Lake Police Department for assistance. At this time, I will defer to Chief Day to talk about his need further. And Chief Day, if, as you're speaking, if you can also comment on the added language in the contract regarding notification and assignment under your authority and the changes to Section 1A, 1B, and Section 7 and 9.
Absolutely. Thank you, Chief Simmons. Thank you, members of the Liberty Lake City Council. I appreciate you giving me an opportunity to speak with you guys tonight. Specifically, what we're looking for is historically in the past, we've contracted with an outside entity to help supplement our game day operations here on campus. However, due to the recent change in litigation, as well as some COVID budgetary shortfalls, we've, we see the need to reach out to other small local police agencies to hopefully help assist us in our process. And specifically, what it equates to is helping us operate our security forces on game days on campus. Roughly equates to about six Saturdays in the fall. Specifically, what we're asking for is two officers from each of the small agencies that we've reached out to, which include Liberty Lake, Airway Heights, and Cheney Blues Department. The changes in the language specifically really line out that while they are out on campus working to support our game day operations, they will fall under my authority as chief of police and director of public safety for Eastern Washington University. And specifically regarding the notification process, I think in the original language that went out, it specified the city would notify the officers from the responding agencies in the event that there was a cancellation. That will actually, that notification will actually come via myself or one of my designees, which would more than likely be my deputy chief. We anticipate it being for the 2021 football season this year, but I'd like it to be an ongoing relationship if at all possible. And specifically, the lens through which I'm viewing it is kind of like you guys alluded to earlier in one of the prior presentations, we lean heavily on the community policing out here on campus, and any opportunity I can have to allow our students opportunities to engage not only with our police department, but with local agencies as well, I think it pushes the mission of law enforcement in general and trying to affect change and break down barriers to communication and those types of things. And also, from a recruiting standpoint, we have criminal justice majors on campus that other than Liberty Lake Police Officers and other agencies coming out to work and support our game day operations, there are limited opportunities for them to engage with those officers to kind of, you know, see if maybe this is somewhere that I would be interested in working.
Thank you, Chief Day. And I would just like, I would just like to add, Mayor, if I could, that Chief Day's willingness to solicit assistance from our agency is a testament to the outstanding relationships that the agencies have. We support each other. I know our sergeants communicate, we communicate as administrators all the time, and we really help each other out in all shapes and forms. So thank you, Chief Day, and thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Chief, real quick, Chief, so when we get to that action item, do we have the edits ready to put into the updated contract? Is one of the ones I'm seeing here, I don't think is updated?
No, Chief Day just, oh, I'm sorry. Am I unmuted? Can you hear me?
You're unmuted, yes.
Okay, I'm sorry. No, yeah, Chief Day just submitted those changes to me, and I do have those in document form and PDF form, so I can send those out.
Okay, so when we get to the action item, we will have, yeah, okay, got it. I just want to make sure we handle that properly and capture the change. Thank you. Okay. City Hall, our heating, ventilation, and air conditioning systems. Trevor's going to give us an update, something he's been working on for several weeks.
Good evening, council, Madam Mayor. Can you, can you all hear me?
We can, thank you.
So we've been working on the updating the HVAC system at City Hall. It is very outdated based on the, when the building was built. So we are looking at replacing not only, not the ductwork at City Hall, but replacing the furnaces, the AC units, and the thermostats all throughout City Hall. We did get one quote to replace everything that came in roughly $94,000 to replace the four HVAC units, the four AC units, the thermostats, move the registers in city council that are in the middle of the room, move those over, and update the AC units. So right now, what we're asking is, is that price, is that, that price worth what the city wants to move forward with for city, just City Hall building? We do plan to have all the ductwork cleaned out, not replaced, just cleaned out, but have all the HVAC replaced in that general area for that price range. We do still have to go up for other quotes, but that is a rough, rough bid of replacing four furnaces, four AC units, and four thermostats for City Hall.
And then I was also going to add, Councilmember Foyer looked at it, and I'd love to get his opinion of the, and evaluation of the scope of the work. And then also, Trevor is working with Avista. Because of the efficiency of the new units, we could see some rebates from Avista up to 70%. So that's not a for sure thing yet, but it's certainly we're going to be working on.
Yeah, go ahead, Councilmember Foyer, if you can give your assessment. I know you've been working with Trevor a bit on this.
Sure, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I just want to follow up on what Trevor said the scope was there. A couple additional things, just to call out, it's a 96% efficient furnace, 16 sear on the ACs, which is really good, refrigerant flushes, as he said, the thermostats. Probably a couple others that are well worth doing is the outside air exchange for the chambers, two units, 400 CFM each, duct systems for that, electrical permit such, and then also, Trevor, wasn't there a mini split in there as well?
Yes, yeah, that was, that was there. So like you said, Phil, the, so it's going to be an exhaust exchange, bringing in fresh air from outside and then exchanging air inside of council chambers. So our public area, when we do start allowing public to be involved in city council meetings and schedule reservations, meetings within council chambers, we will have the option to have a fresh air exchange of bringing fresh air in from outside, exchanging from inside to outside. And then just the efficiency, like Phil, you were saying, right now, we are at 80% efficiency based on our units, and our new units are spec to be 96, 96.7. I don't know how much that 0.7% the difference, but it sounds like we have the option to be qualified for some pretty good rebates right now if we do go forward with this, with this upgrade. So looking forward to this.
My only other comment was, I did, I did check with some folks in the industry that I work with, and it's not the deal of the century, but we're not getting rolled over the coals either. So it's, I mean, it's a big building, it's a lot of work, and in this climate right now, fair is probably about all you can expect.
Yeah, yeah, and I do want to make the point that the ductwork, there is some ductwork that will be done, and that's primarily within council chambers. I'm not sure if you all are familiar, it's probably been a while since everyone's been in council chambers, but we do have some registers that are kind of, not in the center of the room, but kind of near the fireplace. So we did put in for, for that quote to move those over outside of the center of the room. They just kind of block up a little space for chairs, walking space, tables, whatever it may be. And, and just so all you council members know, there's no ductwork that is going to be redone, replaced. This is just the furnace, the AC unit, but then we will be going forward with a cleaning of all of the ductwork, which is a brush and vacuum duct cleaning that will basically run through the inside of all of our ductwork at City Hall, brush off any old debris, dust, dirt, whatever may be sitting there, and a vacuum that sucks everything out. And we plan to do that before the new furnaces, AC units are installed, so that way we pretty much have a brand new system once those units are installed.
Great, thank you. I do see a question from Councilmember Kurt.
My question was just, and I think I heard this, but that the replacement of everything that you guys are talking about will make it safer, I guess, given COVID and everything, that it'll meet the standards, I think, that are being recommended for HVAC. Is that, is that the purpose of why we're doing it and the result?
So the purpose of doing this is, yes, to uphold to the standards of the state for COVID protocols, but our units are nearing their end of life, 20 to 25 years is the standard for a HVAC unit, whether it's AC furnace, and we are pretty much at our threshold right now. But to upgrade and uphold to what the governor recommendations are requires us to upgrade our units. So basically, we are going to upgrade our furnaces, our AC units, and then also add a exhaust that will pull air out of the council chambers and pull fresh air into the council chambers during public meetings. But it will not pull air in or out throughout the city hall offices, just the public area.
Thank you.
Thank you for that clarification. Mayor Porten?
Thank you, Mayor. Two questions. First of all, Trevor and Councilmember Foyer, thanks for taking this on. It's something we've been wanting to do for a long period of time, I appreciate that. The roughly dollar amount is being talked about, Trevor, that's basically from the one bid we've received so far, correct?
Yes, just from one bid.
Okay, so we will go out and look for additional bids?
Yes, yes.
Okay, great. The other question is this, correct me if I'm wrong, but with the system we're looking at, I understand the 96% efficiency and stuff, is there any electronic air cleaners and stuff that's associated with this? If not, is there a reason why we didn't look into that? Because I understand we're drawing fresh air from outside, replacing it from inside. The electronic air cleaners, benefit there is that it double scrubs the air within the facility before it's ejected.
There are options to install electronic air cleaners, and also, it's a cleaner tester. We have not looked into that. That is, as far as I know, from what I've been told from the companies we've reached out to for the HVAC system, it's fairly new. It tests for CO2, smoke, and tests for your air quality. So it's still a fairly new technology from, as far as I was told. But it is something that I have been looking into, and R&amp;R Heating and HVAC, that's who we received our first quote from, they also are looking into that, but they're not making recommendations at this point because it is a very new technology as far as putting it into commercial and residential buildings.
Thanks, Trevor. May I ask one more question? Well, thanks, Trevor, because that leaves, and I have a third question. That, first of all, my recommendation would be is that I think it behooves us to look at the electronic filtration system. I understand what you're saying about the new, and it's not tested and stuff, but electronic air cleaners have been out for years and years and years, and R&amp;R is very familiar with something like that. The benefit of that is that I understand the importance of taking air from outside and bringing it back and forth, but what becomes critical if we have the filtration system, that is, the air in the furnace is directed around the building, that is continually clean, so it removes a lot of dust and impurities that is there. And whatever the cost is for a piece of line is worth the cost. We're only at $100,000, and it's not that much more to do it right. So I'd strongly recommend that we look at that.
Thank you. And of course, the big question to ask, Kyle, we're fairly certain that this will qualify for the ARP reimbursement for anything that we may not get a rebate on?
Absolutely, yeah.
Thank you. Okay, any other questions or comments? All right, thank you. Good work, great work, Trevor.
So we will get some more information from the vendors, so we are required to get competitive quotes, and Trevor's going to move forward in that direction. At this time, Jen's going to give us an update on Barefoot in the Park. Please schedule for it on September 4th.
Good evening. So Barefoot planning is well underway and, for the most part, complete. We're fairly ready for the event September 4th. It's going to kick off at 11:00 AM with the car show. Then around 5:30, I believe, there will be a city birthday celebration of sorts. Throughout the afternoon and into the evening, we hope to have food trucks, we're still working on them. We know that since Pig Out in the Park recently canceled, that maybe we will have a slew of food trucks to choose from. And then at 6:00, the symphony will kick off the evening, and then it will wrap up at the very end with fireworks, our Fourth of July fireworks. We were able to reschedule. If for some reason we do have a red flag warning and the fire department calls the fireworks show off at the last minute, which is always a possibility, we have a third backup plan to reschedule those to possibly kick off the Winter Glow event in November. They are willing to work with us to reschedule that. There would be a cost associated similar to the cancellation at the 4th, but they will work with us to get that show going. So if there are any questions, we hope to see you all there. It'll be a really fun day, and it'll be the first event we've had in a really long time, so look forward to it.
Okay, moving along. Just a reminder, we used to provide regular reports on donations and put together a big list. We have, we are the recipient of many donations in our community, and that was sent out to the council, so I'm not going to go through it, but we're going to start providing you with frequent updates on donations. On the Harvard Road Bridge closure this Friday at 7:00 PM, the bridge will be closed for the installation and the pouring of the new deck, the installation of the new northbound lane. It will be closed for approximately two weeks, and when it opens up on September 3rd, although Lisa pointed out that the new schedule is showing September 5th, you're just going to have to stay tuned for changes in schedule. It will only be the two lanes. The third lane will officially open September 24th. And so on that note, we're looking at a ribbon cutting ceremony. We were originally going to And so on that note, we're looking at a ribbon cutting ceremony, we, we were originally going to do it the first week in September, but we wanted to make sure that all lanes were open, and so we're, we're shooting for September twenty-third to eleven AM. We haven't put the flyer together, but as soon as we nail that down, um, we will uh, provide information to all the councils that you can attend. Um, we, it's kind of an exciting time, I know it's going to be very challenging for our community. Um, there's a lot of uh, businesses that I patronize down here in Liberty Lake, and they'll say, plan ahead because it's going to be an interesting two weeks. Um, if you're on the north side, you have some options going east and west, and if you're on the south side, you have options going east and west. The biggest challenge is going to be going north and south. So um, be patient and plan ahead, that's, that's our recommendation. So moving along to the Public Works Yard, I go right at a few um, hours ago, and I'm going to ask Lisa to give us a quick update on the progress that's being made on the Public Works Yard.
Thank you, Katie, thank you, Mayor and council members. Uh, Todd, can you pull up the Public Works Yard um, report? Thank you. So first of all, huge shout out to Phil Messick, our new um, project manager. He has been managing this project and um, has been working through some of the challenges of working on site and whatnot, um, putting in long days, um, doing the daily inspections, et cetera. But um, uh, we, we have already completed the installation of three of the four drywells. Can you scroll down, please, Todd? We've also completed um, all of the concrete work um, for the apron, the sidewalks and uh, the driveway. Scroll down, please, and there's some, some nice shots of the sidewalk, um, scroll down, please. So we have already installed conduit for the electric um, and data service to our new public works facility and are also um, uh, due drop is in the process of installing the irrigation lines. So we're, we're wrapping up fairly quickly um, on this project. Um, we are delaying the installation of the landscaping until September, it's a better time to plant. Uh, although uh, with the cool week that we're having this week, um, uh, maybe that would have been okay, but um, with the heat that we've had, we had asked them to hold off uh, better for the plants to uh, wait until a little later in September. Um, I want to keep scrolling down, so I think that's, um, and here's an image of the, the patchwork for when we brought the water line across the street. So um, again, Phil is doing a great job, he would be here tonight, but he's been working some pretty long days, being on site with the construction, manning, managing several other projects. So um, anyhow, um, I do stand for questions. Thank you.
So thanks, Lisa. Get our things to Phil as well.
Okay, along that line, also the annexation of the former Den Club, some of you are, are familiar with that. That should be complete of October fifth, and at that time, that property will be part of Liberty Lake. And I know Lisa's reached out to the state to draw the boundaries, um, there are no population changes associated with it. Um, but on that note, I wanted to jump down to events, we have a lot of events, and I have two more to add at the end. So farmer's market is ongoing, movies uh, that council member Jen already mentioned with Harry Potter and the Chamber of Secrets on Friday, I believe, and then Ra- Raya, I'm sorry, and uh, Last Dragon on, on Saturday, and then Shakespeare in the Park with Midsummer's Night Dream on August twenty-second, which is Sunday. Cornhole, August twenty-eighth, Barefoot in the Park, September fourth, the Harvard Road Bridge ribbon cutting, September twenty-third. And the two that I have to add are the Special Olympics sports run is August twenty-eighth, and the cops, cars and cruisers on September eleventh.
Yeah.
So lots of things happening in our community, Mayor.
And, and that, that cruise um, on September eleventh actually goes to the State Line Speedway um, as part of their um, nine eleven tribute. So it, it'll go from here every state line, I think they go around the track a couple times, so get signed up for that.
Mayor, that concludes my report.
Okay, that's a lot. Uh, all right, next up on the list is workshops, no workshops tonight. Moving on to ten, uh, general business, I'll hand it over to Mayor Proten.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, for general business A, motion to approve August third, two thousand twenty-one city council meeting minutes, and also item two, approve August seventeenth vouchers in amount of seven hundred eighty-four thousand nine hundred fifty-seven dollars and forty-two cents. Second.
Okay, moved and seconded by councilman receivers, any questions? On our vouchers and minutes, not seeing any, all in favor of approving consent agenda, consent, consent agenda items one and two, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, consent agenda passes seven zero.
Thank you, Mayor, action items, B one, motion to authorize execution amendment to the task order twenty-twenty dash five, the parameters for additional amount not to exceed twenty thousand dollars to provide essential city engineering services, development engineering reviews. Second.
Moved and seconded by councilman receivers, Lisa, you just want to give us a high level review of this request?
Yeah, so um, last year, when we had a vacant engineer's position, you authorized twenty, twenty thousand dollars for um, engineering review services for uh, our PEBs crew. Um, we actually just um, uh, expended all of that as of the end of this month. And with another vacancy for engineer, um, I, I will be needing additional funds. So we've requested um, an increase by twenty thousand dollars, um, we will only spend it if we need it. Um, and it is, uh, because this is for permit reviews, for civil plan reviews, for subdivision reviews, et cetera. It is cost recovery. Um, not maybe recovering as much cost as we normally would, but um, it's uh, it's um, the only way to keep um, our development services going in the absence of an engineer.
Thank you, any questions or comments from the council? Not seeing any, okay, all in favor of approving action item one, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, motion passes seven zero.
Thank you, item two, uh, motion to authorize execution of amendment number two to task order number twenty-twenty dash zero eight, the parameters for additional amount not to exceed eleven thousand seven hundred ninety-five dollars for construction administration services and engineering. Second.
Okay, moved and seconded by councilman receivers, Lisa, you're up again, quick.
Yes, just, just quickly, um, when we uh, initiated the task order for the legacy ridge drive signal, we did not include um, engineering services during construction. Um, again, given the situation that we're in, um, we have rejected all bids, but we will be going back out to bid at some point in the future when the timing is right, hopefully a little bit later in the fall. Um, and so this will, this will provide us with um, uh, construction engineering services and that basically resolving conflicts in the field, answering questions, et cetera, during construction of the legacy ridge drive uh, traffic signal.
Question from council member Fuller.
Yep, thank you. Uh, Lisa, so the, the funds for this portion of that uh, of the um, traffic signal, uh, will be able to, if we, if you use the funds now, will be able to use the services or pull in the documentation when we're ready to execute?
Uh, that's, that's correct, and we will not, we will not use it if we don't need to. This is just to provide us with the flexibility during construction to answer questions and to oversee. Um, there's usually some technical questions, et cetera, that go along with the signal, the, the, the signal um, installation, and uh, we've seen that on Ridge Line, we've seen that on our prior projects at Madsen and Appleway. So this just gives us the technical, uh, provides the technical responses that are necessary to keep the contractor going.
I'm sorry, okay, then I'm a, maybe a little confused. On your summary statement, the first sentence there says it's regarding the design of the traffic signal.
So they, we, we, so the, so the, the original task order was for the design. We're now adding the um, construction engineering services to that task order for the time when we do construct it.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Question, all right, any other questions, discussion? Not hearing any, all in favor of approving action item B two, please say aye.
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 Okay, any opposed? All right, hearing none, motion passes seven zero.
Thank you, ac- action item three, motion to delegate authority to the mayor to execute the professional services agreement with WC three for on-call plan and review and inspection services. Second.
Okay, moved and seconded by councilman Langford. Lisa, your show tonight.
So this is for uh, building plan review services, it's really just a belt and suspenders contract for when we get um, an influx, or should we ever have a situation where we have um, someone who might be out on medical leave, or we may have a vacancy to help us keep our development uh, reviews going. And so we will, again, only use this if we need, if we need to, um, in uh, Feb- February, we had um, undertaken a contract going through Cheney's on-call services, if you recall, because we had an influx because of the um, the new twenty-eighteen building code going into effect. And so we ended up hit, using them for three commercial plan reviews, and that was really it. And, 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 um, but having this contract in place as a backup means that we can uh, be responsive to the developers in our community as development plans are coming in. If need be.
Question?
So we have not, but we actually know them because they're part of the Wabo group. Um, Wayne, Wayne and Rudy and now Chris know this group very well. They actually have been providing this service to Airway Heights for years, and they actually were the firm that would be uh, Community Center for Airway Heights. They did all the plan reviews and all the inspections, et cetera.
Councilwoman Fuller?
Thank you, Mayor. Oh, so Lisa, um, I guess, uh, help me understand the when, and, and not with this, this company and even previously with uh, Cheney, help me understand, um, is there somebody in our staff or your department that just periodically double checks their work? Um, if, if they, cause as I read through this document, it looks like we could call on them for uh, uh, building inspections, different things.
Yes.
Whatever their determination is, uh, your department is bound to, is that a fair statement?
No, that's not, that's not a fair statement. And so one of the things that they do, and they do very well, and we heard this from Airway Heights, and this is actually how we operated when we went through Cheney's contract, is that they work with my building staff to make certain that they are being consistent in the way we are, we have always interpreted the code. And so there are differences um, from agency to agency in terms of interpretations and, and you always want to maintain consistency of interpretation with your jurisdiction. So they do work with us to say, well, this is, you know, is, would you consider this ticky tack? This is technically um, what the code says, but um, in many jurisdictions, um, this would be considered too ticky tack to call out.
Okay, so there is a double check there from our, your department, thank you.
Yes, yes, sir, there absolutely is.
Right, and uh, Lisa, just real quick again, just for clarification, um, most, if not all of this is also cost recovery, just like.
It absolutely, this is, this is totally cost recovery, so it's only a percentage of our building permit review fees.
Thanks, just want to make sure everybody in the audience is there, has any other questions or comments on this item? Okay, not seeing any, all in favor of, of approving action item B three, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, any opposed? All right, hearing none, motion passes seven zero.
Thank you, item uh, four, motion delegate authority to the mayor to execute a memorandum of understanding Liberty Lake Sewer and Water District for construction services inspection related to construction of Kramer Road Overpass. Second.
Seconded by councilman receivers, um, Lisa, are you going to tackle this one too?
I, yes, I am, it's all me tonight, um, so uh, my apologies. Um, so in this particular case, so as part of the Kramer Road Overpass, there's a water line that needs to be relocated um, for Liberty Lake Sewer and Water District. Now, we have to have utility agreements before Wash Dot could pull the pig trigger on the contract. Liberty Lake Water and Sewer District had concerns because uh, Wash Dot never warranties their work or requires the country, their contractors to warranty their work. So um, we, they almost weren't going to contract, execute the utility agreement that's required to move forward with this project. Um, Katie successfully negotiated um, a uh, concept where we would pay for their engineer to do third-party inspection services during the construction, and that satisfied them that they would then be able to live with the fact that the work was not warranted. So it, this is a not to exceed thirty-five thousand dollar contract. This is, this thirty-five thousand dollars does go towards our six million dollar contribution to the uh, Harvard Road Bridge and Henry Road Overpass. So it is, it does count towards that, um, and it was a way to keep the project moving forward.
Any questions, council member Dunn?
Uh, I'm just grateful for a great relationship with our Jason, uh, okay, thanks.
Anybody else? All right, not seeing or hearing any, all in favor of approving action item B four, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes seven zero.
A special thank you to Katie.
Action item uh, five, motion to authorize the mayor to execute memorandum of understanding with the Liberty Lakes. Oh, I had to pause, I thought I just read that.
It's a new one.
It's a different one.
Memorandum of understanding of Liberty Lake Sewer and Water District and Lexington Homes, DRH LLC for utility coordination during the Kramer Parkway partial construction.
Yes, so.
Oh, oh, do we have, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by councilman receivers, thanks, go ahead, Lisa.
So we have a TIB application going in for the partial reconstruction of Kramer Parkway that's going to happen next year, and what we're going to do is we, um, again, the concern is that, um, because of the condition of the roadway, if we do not do a partial reconstruction, we're actually going to lose a sub base, and then we're going to end up having a much bigger construction project. So we are moving forward, it's on our, it's on our transportation improvement program for next year. Um, we are applying for a TIB grant. Uh, there's two things that need to happen at the same time we do this, and we're tying into all the work that DR Horton already did for, for Legacy Ridge West and to our frontage improvements, but it's going to really create a connectivity between our bike paths and our, and our, um, and our sidewalks from really Sprague Avenue all the way to uh, Country Vista, tying into our new Kramer Parkway Overpass project, and also tying into the pathways along Country Vista Drive. But two things have to happen, so uh, Liberty Lake Sewer and Water District had a water reclamation line that they wanted to um, extend down Kramer Parkway, and um, uh, Legacy Ridge West, which is now, the project is now owned by uh, uh, Lexington Homes, DR Horton, um, needed to create a loop in the water line along Country Vista. So rather than having all these projects happening separately, which is not in anybody's interest, it's not the traveling public, it's not um, in the interest of the condition of the roadway, et cetera, et cetera. This MOU um, allows for a coordinated project whereby the Sewer and Water District pay for their, their part of the project, DR Horton, um, uh, Lexington Homes pays for their part, but it's all bid together with three separate schedules. And um, by the way, we get a whole bunch of extra points from TIB for coordinated. from TIB for coordinating with the utilities, so it's, this is a matter of good government, good construction practice, and it's of benefit to all three parties, as well as our traveling public.
Thank you, Councilmember Langford.
Lisa, can you answer a question for me, please, what happens to any overruns?
So, so there are, so we're going to bid this with three separate schedules. Each party has to pay for their own design, the design of their schedule, and then they pay for their own construction cost. At the time of bidding, either party can pull, either of the other parties can pull out of this, they can reject, reject their schedule, and so, and so that piece of the project would not be constructed, but any cost overruns for a particular schedule is paid for by the party that is responsible for that piece of it, so there, so it's, we're literally bidding three separate projects together to be constructed by one contractor, to be managed by the city.
Got it, thank you.
Thank you, any Councilmember Folier?
Lisa, so that, that's a great explanation, that was part of my question, a follow-up question, your comment about they could, they could pull out of the schedule at any time, at some, the intent here is there's a savings for all three parties to coordinate. To, my, my, so I guess my question is, based on that, is there at some point along the process here where they need to commit?
Yes, so they have to commit, once we have the bids in, before we award the contract, they can decide to pull out. After that, they have, they have to go forward, so they're committing at the time that we award the bid.
Thank you.
Any other questions coming? Not, all in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? All right, motion passes seven zero.
Thank you, thank you, Item Six, Motion to Approve and Delegate Authority to Execute the Letter of Engagement with Perkins Coe? Coe? Thank you, Trailhead Design, Build Legal Services.
There's a second. Second by Councilman Reivers. Katie, are you taking this one?
I can.
Okay, thank you.
So, in, in conversations with our construction manager, we identified design build as the most efficient and cost-effective way to deliver that project, and in order to get permission in the state of Washington to do design build, you'll have to go to the PRC and get permission, and you have to have legal counsel who's fluent in design build law and construction, and we have, our great attorney has experience, so we thought that Perkins Coe brings something to the table. In addition, they have a template of design build contracts that can be very complicated, that are well vetted and have been widely used in the state of Washington. So, though their hourly rate is above what we would normally be used to paying, in conversations with our construction manager, we're capping it at $10,000, and also Graham Wallace, who is the individual that we would be working with, with Perkins Coe, he would be representing, representing us at the PRC, and then negotiations with the design build contract, but then that would be pretty much it, so just to get us over the goal line, if you will, and my understanding is that Graham Wallace is highly respected in the industry, and he also represents numerous clients in Spokane area, so $10,000, and that gives us our legal representation, we need to go to the PRC, which is, I think, the third week of September.
Twenty, maybe?
Something like that, yeah.
Any questions, concerns, comments? All right, not hearing or seeing any, all in favor of approving Action Item B six, please say aye. Any opposed? All right, motion passes seven zero.
Very good, thank you, Mayor. Only two left, Action Item Seven, which is Motion to Approve Contract with Central Valley for Resource Officer.
All right, moves in second, we heard a presentation on this earlier, are there any further questions or comments? Councilmember Langford?
Yes, for Chief, can you help me understand where the officer is going to be stationed, or what school he's going to be at?
Yes, sir, he will still have an office available for him, from what I understand, at Selkirk, but his main office will be at the new school, the new high school, Ridgeline.
Okay, because I believe I read in the agreement that you just sent a few minutes ago that it's at Central Valley, and it was an indication to me that it would have been the high school. Is that correct from what I read or not?
No, Central Valley in that document refers to the school district, not, not the actual high school.
Thank you.
Thank you, any other questions, comments? All right, not seeing or hearing any, all in favor of approving the agreement with Central Valley School District, please say aye. Any opposed? Not hearing, motion passes seven zero.
Very good, thank you, Mayor, last item, Item Number Eight, and the Motion to Approve the Contract Agreement for Outside Agency Police Services for Eastern Washington University Home Football Games.
This is second by Councilman Reivers, any further questions or comments, Councilman Reivers?
Chief, maybe you can answer this, perhaps this for Kyle, the cost recovery portion, $6 per hour, is that, that covered, fully a little bit?
It was added during the agenda.
They pay the officer, I believe, and she printed it directly. They paid the officers directly for their overtime, and then they pay us for their car.
What was the invoicing, affirmative, not in contract?
Yeah, it was.
Chief Simmons, can you answer that?
I, I can't hear, because I'm, I'm hearing about, there's some bleed over, I'm hearing about six people talking at the same time, so it's, it's all jumbled.
That's our fault, go ahead, Councilman Reivers.
Pull up the contract now. Maybe you can just go over how the invoicing works, there was a, there was a rate per game, it was like we were going to invoice EWT and recover other costs. How those costs were determined, $50 per caller, here we go. $940 estimate per game, two officers, seven hours, $60 an hour, $840 plus two patrol vehicles, at $50 each for 100, I'm just curious how we came up with those numbers.
I'll let Chief Day answer that, that was, that determination was, was calculated on their end, and it was agreed on on our end by officers, so I'll let Chief Day explain how he calculated that.
Sure, sure, so with regards to the vehicles, we settled on a, on a flat rate of $50 per vehicle, and, but, you know, I did let Chief Simmons know that we're open to paying a mileage rate as opposed to a flat rate, depending on, on what was agreed to. From the standpoint of the $60 an hour, that is the overtime rate that we pay for outside agencies to come in and assist our officers in handling game day services, based on our budgetary limitations.
So what do our officers actually cost per hour? This is an adequate agreement for what our officers are hourly rate, yeah, this is certainly fair.
Generally, generally, when it comes to overtime, or excuse me, when it comes to extra duty details, it can range, it's just, it's whatever agreement is finalized on, on the, on the part of both parties. I'll refer to the Spokane County and Spokane Police Department, and I also believe Airway Heights is in there as well. They use one person for their extra duty coordinations, their extra duty coordinator, and it just depends on what's, what's agreed upon by the parties, there's no set for extra duty. It's not, it's not actually an overtime, it's an extra duty assignment, so it's not as if they're beyond their 40 hours a week, or however many hours a week that they're working on their normal duty, this is a volunteer basis extra duty assignment, it's not an overtime assignment.
Great, thank you. I understand, this is a cost neutral, are they kept it forward, do we realize that? That's correct, yeah.
And Councilmember Langford, perusing the contract, so, go ahead.
Chief, I'm, I'm just wondering, I've just got a chance to look at the agreement, what happens in the event one of our officers are injured by participating in a out-of-city event?
They're still covered under our insurance, it's, it's, you know, it's, the way it's, for me, that's the way I understand it's always been, when you work extra duty, you're still covered under your, your employing agency's insurance, so that will refer back to whatever our insurance, that, excuse me, that officer's insurance coverage is.
And Chief, if I can expound on that a little bit, typically when we have members of outside agencies come in to support our operation, we don't put them in what's called a contact team, meaning any, any arrest or any citizen contacts that are going to result in arrest or handles solely by my agency.
Thank you. Councilmember Dunn, I think you had a question as well, and then Councilmember.
Yeah, Chief Simmons, could you just provide some reassurance gesture that providing the additional services won't create any resource constraints to you and provide public safety to the people that work late?
Yeah, of course, again, this is an extra duty assignment, volunteer basis, based on availability of the officers and their willingness to participate. This is, this has nothing to do with our scheduling of officers on patrol, investigations, et cetera. So no, it doesn't affect our staffing in, in any way, form or fashion.
I think Councilmember Folier had a question as well.
Yeah, no, my question was very similar to Councilman Dunn's. My only, my only follow-up question to that would be, is there any restriction if the officer decides to, on a volunteer basis, work extra duty on a Saturday at the football game, and then he's got to work the next three days, whatever it is, for you, is there any issues there?
No, we have in our policy, and also in our contract, the amount of officer, the amount of time officers can work, and the amount of time they have to have off before they can work again. So as long as they're within policy, and also within our contract, they'll be fine.
Perfect, thank you.
Senator Tim?
Thank you, Mayor, I'm assuming that this extra off-duty time they're going to be doing this, this doesn't become a conflict with the contractor, or what we're also doing with Legacy Ridge, where we have individuals spending.
No, it's, it's, it's not uncommon to have multiple extra duty assignments in an agency going at one time, and again, it's volunteer basis, and there's no conflict, it's just, you know, who volunteers for what at, at what time, so, no conflict at all.
Any other questions, comments? All right, not hearing or seeing any, all in favor of approving Action Item B seven, contract with, sorry, eight, contract with Eastern Washington University, please say aye. Okay, any opposed? All right, motion passes seven zero. All right, we are moving on to ordinances, Anne, it's your time to shine.
All right, thank you, Mayor, Ordinance Number 277, City of Liberty Lakes, Spokane County, Washington. An ordinance of the City of Liberty Lakes, Spokane County, Washington, establishing a community engagement commission, providing for the appointment and terms of commission members, and removal of the same, providing for severability, establishing the duties thereof, and establishing an effective date.
First read, but we do have an option, opportunity to discuss and ask questions, and, if you had any, right now? Comments, questions on Ordinance 277, tonight?
Just, I do have just a comment, not a question on it, but I think we've already talked about having a further conversation about the ability of the mayor's seat in voting for anything relative to an ordinance, whether it's in the lead-up of verbiage or whether it's the vote itself. So, and I understand that we're going to be discussing that further length, so thank you for that.
No problem. All right, Councilmember Kurtz, this is your, your baby, do you have anything to add tonight?
No, I'm just, I'm excited that we are in this place, and I thank everybody for their comments and their questions that I think let us see, hopefully something that not only can we all agree on, but that hopefully in the next couple of weeks, that our community can become a part of, and, and continue to help our city grow.
Great, thank you, any other comments or questions? All right, thank you, Anne, so we will have, this will come back for second read at the next meeting.
Okay, first read ordinance number 279, City of Liberty Lakes, Spokane County, Washington. An ordinance of the City of Liberty Lake, Washington, granting the right of franchise to Zayo Group LLC and its affiliates for the operation of a telecommunications system in the City of Liberty Lake.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, there was a staff recommendation that we waived the second read ordinance, or we have that this evening.
So, the background is the, the contract actually expired earlier this month, so the request is to suspend the rules, to move this to second read tonight.
Because it's time sensitive.
Yeah, it is time sensitive, and due, we, we are also, my request to, to staff is, we're looking at some options going forward on how to better manage contract end dates, so that we don't, again, the situation, there's got to be something out there, so we're taking a look at that, whether it's part of our asset management software, what's available.
Madam Mayor, we can motion that we move forward with the second read.
Okay, moving second, any discussion or comments? All right, so the motion, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Can you shed a little bit of light on what Zayo Group does for us?
They're a fiber provider, it's a franchise agreement for them to install fiber around the city, but a good enough description, Lisa.
It is.
Thank you.
They are already here, it's just their, their contract expired, and this is a renewal.
Franchise.
Yeah, okay. Yes, go ahead.
The municipal codes only provide for a 10-year agreement, so that's why it's come up, so this is just a renewal of what's already in place.
Thank you for that clarification, okay, we have a motion, and I believe it's second by Mayor Protem, on the, on the fourth, oh, sorry, second by Councilmember Reivers, to suspend the rules and move this to second read tonight. Do we have any questions on that motion? If not, all in favor of suspending the rules to move the ordinance number 279 to second read tonight, say aye, oh, actually, no, say aye. Make sure, it's not the ordinance suspension, I'm trying to remember my hand, all right, any opposed? All right, not hearing any, motion passes to suspend the rules, so Anne, we'll go ahead and move to second read.
Okay, second read, Ordinance Number 279, City of Liberty Lakes, Spokane County, Washington. An ordinance of the City of Liberty Lake, Washington, granting the franchise, granting the right of franchise to Zayo Group LLC and its affiliates for the operation of a telecommunications system in the City of Liberty Lake.
All right, we do take, before we, before it's moved, we do have opportunity during second read ordinance for public comment, so I will go ahead and open it up, if you have a comment on renewal of this franchise agreement, go ahead and send a quick note to Todd Henderson, our meeting manager, and we'll take the public comment. All right, not seeing or hearing any, we'll go ahead and ask for the motion to, oh, who do I have, I heard a voice.
There's no comments.
Okay, thanks, Todd, all right, Mayor Protem?
Therefore, I make a motion that we approve ordinance number 279.
Okay, moves in second by Councilmember Reivers, all right, all in favor of Ordinance 279, please raise your hand. I see seven hands, motion, ordinance 279 passes seven zero, thank you, everybody. All right, we have no emergency ordinances, introduction of upcoming agenda items.
Okay, September 7th is going to be a busy night, we have three workshops at 5 o'clock, financing personnel manual, and councilor's rules and procedures. Then we have a proclamation declaring September Childhood Cancer Awareness Month. Going to the 7:00 PM workshop, two of them, one is on the American Rescue Plan funding for nonprofits, and then we have the utility tax discussion, then we have approval of minutes and vouchers. We're looking to buy a backhoe.
Um, we're looking to buy a backhoe, so if we stay on the schedule with that, we would have that in your package. And then Jen will have an invoice for winter go, I believe asking for, um, the city's financial commission to their, um, events. Public hearing on, um, what was mentioned tonight on the development code regarding housing. We have a twenty twenty-two city budget, is that a presentation or a hearing?
We'll have a, we'll have a budget amendment and then a preliminary hearing.
Okay. And then first read ordinance on development of, um, code amendments associated with housing, a twenty twenty-one budget amendment that Cal did mention, and then a second read on the community engagement commission.
You got anything covered? Oh, Mayor Pertim, go ahead.
Yeah, uh, we should mention, we have, at the six o'clock, we have three items on there. Really? I, I would think that the council takes serious consideration, sometimes we're hard pressed to get through one, because really, really, I've got fifty-five minutes. So, I would recommend that we look at those three, and what would be our priority to start with? We get to that, and what is our second, possibly third?
So, the three there, on there are trailhead financing, personnel manual update, and follow-up to councilor's procedure. I will note that on the twenty-first, there is not a six PM.
Okay.
So, if you, if you would like to consider moving the rules of procedure to the six PM on the twenty-first, just a thought, what are you guys?
Are we, are we rushing for the, for the financing? Um, not necessarily, we pushed it back already though, so, I think, I think we're ready to proceed on that.
So, um, so it sounds like, so, what, what everybody's thought about leaving trailhead financing and the personnel manual update on September seventh and moving the rules of procedure to the twenty, Mayor Pertim?
No comment, no, I'm okay. I agree.
Okay, any opposed? Alright, sounds like we'll move, move the final review of the rules of procedure to the twenty-first and lead the other two, which hopefully will be fairly light, um, at six o'clock on the seventh. Okay, alright, and so we have. Yes, sir, go ahead, Councilmember.
Thank you.
Go ahead, sorry.
So, if our workshop, or if our committee workshop at six o'clock on September seventh is as lightning fast as you predict, Mayor, would you be prepared to give us resolution twelve?
I can't, yeah, I, I will be, but I, I think it'll, that will over, that will run over what time we do have left.
Okay.
Possibly, just based on our previous discussions on it.
Just checking, thank you.
No problem. Okay, anybody other questions? Alright, um, so we are back to citizen comments. Another citizen comment period, um, so if you would like to add something that you wanted to speak about during the meeting or any other topic, just send a chat to Todd Henderson, and he will let me know, and we will allow three minutes for your citizen comments. I don't see any. Todd just confirming, before I move on.
No comments.
Thank you. Alright, so we have no executive session, um, so if there's no further business before the council, um, move to adjourn. Alright, alright, thank you, see everybody, um, on the seventh. Alright, thanks, have a good night.